Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council being held this Monday, October 16, 2023. Tonight's meeting is in council chambers and livestreamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. Next meeting will be Monday, November, I wrote October 16th. Yeah, November 6th, okay, 2023 at 7:30. Ms. Hamilton, as Clerk of Council, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Present.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and I'll note that I've made a change on the agenda that we'll have a committee report. The Public Utilities Committee met this evening before tonight's meeting, so if you want to note that change. Other than that, at this point in time, I would ask you to stand and join the city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 2nd, 2023 meeting. So moved. So moved by Mr. Ansel is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of October 2nd, 2023 are approved. Welcome, Mayor. Good seeing you. Looking forward to what you have to say this evening.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke, and members of council. Thank you for a nice greeting here this evening. Just have a few things to report. Good evening to the council members and the public. Again, we have a relatively short agenda, but the things you have to decide tonight are very important to the running of our city. Information technology, it's the first business in, under new business, has increasingly become a difficult trade to hire management and administrative staff. Our city administrative team believes the best succession plan is to create an IT position of Assistant Information Systems Manager. This person will be second in command behind the manager and will be learning to take charge in the retirement or loss of the manager. The next three resolutions deal with the operations of our water and wastewater systems and equipment or services for their efficient operations. They are all necessary to our utilities. We realize that in Section 2.03 of our city charter, the compensation and bonds of city-elected officials, the mayor and council members, is to be established in 2023. In 2011, and every four years thereafter, it was established that council, in consultation with the mayor, will appoint a compensation commission consisting of seven-plus residents. Nine is what was done in the year 2015 and also in 2019. Resident electors who will be charged to make recommendations regarding the salary amount to be paid to the mayor and members of city council. It was last done in 2019, so council members, please consider who might be a good member of such a commission, and please get your suggestions to Amy Hamilton so that a group can get started. Heritage Ohio's annual conference was October 10th to 12th in the Dayton Arcade. It's down just off of the University of Dayton. It's a beautiful old building that has been totally rehabbed and put back into productive use. Joel and myself attended, along with Sandra Hall and Shannon Wellert. Wellert was supposed to be there, but she unfortunately was sick and was not able to get there. So Worcester was highlighted on a video that was presented there, and if you'd like to see it, it's posted on our city website. So just a quick, maybe two, three-minute video, but it's nicely done. And lastly, Ordinance 2023-24 is before you tonight on second reading. The applicant is asking for a community reinvestment area, or CRA, tax abatement for building in a greenfield site on State Route 585 in our city. We, as a city, have never, let me repeat that, we, as a city, have never given a CRA for a retail operation in a greenfield site. To our development team, this will harm or diminish our CRA program if this is allowed. We encourage you to turn down this request. And that's my council report tonight. Thank you, President Biden-Dyke.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We do not have any petitions, but we have a couple of folks that want to speak on agenda items. The first one is Mr. Justin Starland. If he would come up, tell us your name, and my guess is it's the same thing you spoke on last night.
It is, yes.
On the CRA, and that's what it says on the sheet.
Excellent. Thank you. Justin Starland, business address 1825 Enterprise Parkway, home address 4149 Congress Road, Worcester. Couple of things highlight, we had some council members that were not present last week, or two weeks ago, rather. So I wanted to hit on a couple of things and a couple of new items before I turn things over to Luke. How this project came about, again, in spring of 2023, Excess Limited and Jason Carrick began the discussion of talking about undertaking a project somewhere in the Worcester and Wayne County area. Him and I are business partners on a couple of ventures, and I brought up the fact that in front of our warehouse, right in front of Enterprise Zone, there was a site that probably could work for him. It was zoned appropriately, and also it has a CRA in it. He had concerns about the design elements and the construction costs inside of the city of Worcester, but after looking at the CRA incentive potentially being offered at a 50% rate, he said, well, let's give it a go and let's apply and see if we can get the support we need. The application was filed early this fall, late summer, with Mr. Malley, and it was based on the most active and up-to-date CRA ordinance, 2020/42, which specifically calls out, and this is verbatim, "Retail and other points-of-sale businesses located outside of downtown shall have a minimum commitment of 10 jobs and $1 million of investment." And as a recap, this project is a 50,000, roughly 50,000 square foot new retail facility. It has at least 20 jobs, no transfer of jobs, these are all new, and $4 to $6 million of investment. Again, far exceeds all the standards to apply. The request is not egregious, and it's not greedy. It does not ask for anything over 50% or 10 years. That's important because it doesn't require school board vote or approval, so it's not pushing the envelope beyond the standard agreement for a CRA. It will have new net real estate tax results. Current property tax, which was highlighted in Mr. Malley's summary, $3,072 with a 50% abatement right away, it goes to 41,552, and once the abatement is off, $80,030 is the estimate. So all new taxes. And as an example, Mr. Reynolds, in your previous life as legal counsel of the Worcester City Schools, your constant comment on tax incentives was, you can't lose what you never had. In the process and review consistency, and this is something that has a little bit of concern for me, is you guys get these one-pagers and summaries of all CRAs. This is not anything new, and on the back, it also has a summary. So this is not new information. This has been, we've had 18 years of CRA, and we've had, I think, 35 to 40 CRA requests. This is the only one that says it will cost taxpayers and other businesses money, and the template was actually changed to not say gain, it says it will be a cost. There's no other, every single, and we brought copies of those, every single one says it'll be a gain except this one. So we do really think that consistency within the review process and documentation is important. Lastly, private sector. We hit on this last time I spoke. Outside of this project, private sector does need some things from City Hall. In the City of Worcester Economic Development Strategic Plan, which was presented to Worcester Rotary in September of 2023, highlighted three components, this private sector and investors need from City Hall. And I hit on this last month, or two weeks ago, I think it's important. Certainty, consistency, and predictability. A yes vote on this project this evening definitely delivers that. Thank you for your time.
Okay. And then Lucas Palmer?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, President Biden-Dyke. Good evening, council members. My name's Luke Palmer. My business address is 1605 Sylvan Road, Worcester, Ohio. I am legal counsel for Jason Carrick and several of his entities. It's nice to be back in Worcester. I see some familiar faces here. It's nice to see that. I'm here tonight on behalf of Jason Carrick to express his support in favor of the CRA application. Unfortunately, he's out of town due to a prior commitment. I want to point out that a vote to approve this application is a vote for the taxpayers, it's a vote for the schools, it's a vote for private investment, and it's a vote for jobs. I want to tell you a little bit about Jason. I know some of you may know him, he may be familiar with his retail stores at the Ported Square Plaza, Everything Surplus, the Clothing Warehouse, Dollar One. Many of you may not know how he started his stores. About 25 years ago, he bought one Hallmark store, had a handful of employees. He is now, operates multiple businesses, primarily within the Worcester community, but also across the country, and he now employs upwards of 600 people. I also want to tell you a little about his previous investments. This is not the first time that he's invested in the city of Worcester. Obviously, he has the Ported Square Plaza. He didn't get any abatements or funding assistance for that. He's continued to operate those stores and to invest in that plaza. 31 Bistro is a restaurant that he bought a bank, he spent over $750,000 making improvements to that restaurant. He bought an industrial warehouse in 2013 that he made improvements to. Many of you may know, he now owns the old jail, he bought that, I think, in 2014. Kept people employed throughout COVID, has accelerated that business. Also, he operates Excess Limited, which has a 210,000 square foot warehouse out on Sylvan Road. That was purchased in 2018. He recently acquired the Worcester Brush Building on Old Mansfield Road. Excess is one of the largest liquidators in the country, and it's the sole supplier for Jason's retail stores, and it will be the sole supplier for this new project. They supply the inventory, and keep in mind, that is located just outside of Worcester, but employs over 100 people. Why do we need a new store, a new discount retail store? Jason wishes to invest over $5 million into a new store on the green space on 585. He needs to build a new store essentially because of the success of the existing store. It's outgrown the location. He'd like to add more inventory and more space so that customers can have a better We know that there were some discussions, both public and private, where I think there were maybe some false narratives, maybe just some misunderstandings as to where Jason was coming from and what the intentions were with this property, and I want to address just a few of those. First of all, Jason is involved in the Worcester community. I know there may have been some statements saying he was not. He served on the Worcester Chamber of Commerce Board. He employs several employees who live in and work in the city of Worcester and who have children who attend the Worcester City Schools. He supports many local charities, and he believes he's the largest supporter of the 4H program at the Wayne County Fair, and I believe him, just at the prior fair, he spent over $200,000 on fair projects. Second, I think it's a misunderstanding to say that his stores do nothing for the Worcester community, his existing stores. Some people, some of us are fortunate enough to be able to pay full retail price for products. Jason's stores provide discount products, things such as food, diapers, formula, school clothing, Christmas presents. Many in our community are less fortunate, and this gives them the ability to buy those products. Elderly people often shop at these stores. Some of them are on a fixed budget income. They need to be able to have discount shopping as well. Jason's stores bring dollars in from outside of Worcester. They draw customers from throughout Wayne County, surrounding counties, and even throughout the state of Ohio. According to our credit card receipts, we believe approximately 80% of our retail sales come from outside the city of Worcester. Additionally, with retail, when people come to shop, unlike manufacturing, with retail, they're likely to come and spend more money at other retail stores, whether it might be restaurants, it might be gas stations, it might be convenience store, those types of things. It's a misunderstanding to say that Jason will abandon his other businesses at Ported Square if this project moves forward. That's not true at all. And just to be clear, nobody actually ever asked Jason what he planned to do with those stores if this project was approved. Jason is going to keep that store there and focus more on grocery products and other essential products. He's going to keep the employment level at that property site at the existing level or potentially increase it. So that will not be impacted by this new project. Finally, I do want to point out that I think there was a misunderstanding about the rezoning of this property and that somehow Jason and others knew that this project was going to come about. Jason was not even aware that this property was available for development until well after it had been rezoned. So there's simply no truth to that being a scheme in order to convince the council to rezone it for this particular purpose. This particular purpose didn't come about until after the rezoning occurred. I just want to point out that, you know, once again, you know, Jason's invested in multiple properties in the city of Worcester or within the community of Worcester. He's looking to make yet another significant investment and risking $5 million on a project that will better the community of Worcester. It will provide jobs, it will increase tax revenues for Worcester schools, it will provide essential products for the citizens of Worcester. I say again, a vote for this application is a vote for taxpayers, it's a vote for the schools, it's a vote for private investment, and it's a vote for jobs. Thank you for your time, and we welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. I don't think anyone else has signed up on agenda items, so we will consider to have the portion with regard to communications from the public. Now, I know we did have a Public Utilities Committee meeting, and I don't know if you're prepared, Mr. Ansel, to give us a synopsis of that.
Yes, I'll be brief. We had a very productive, insightful Public Utilities Committee meeting this evening with about 15 residents concerned about the aggregation program, wanting to understand the details and the dynamics, and they were very prepared and very thorough in their question. And our consultant, Palmer Energy, Amy, did a marvelous job explaining the protocols of the aggregation process, the dynamics of how the net discounts or cost reductions are yielded. And really, the most important element of discussion was the ability to capitalize on the savings when they're available, and from the consumer's perspective, when they're not available, opting out very quickly. So there isn't any significant long-term consequences associated with this aggregation initiative. It will be on the ballot. We've fulfilled all the obligations of our public hearings and council review and approval to have it put on the ballot. It was accepted widely at the polls, and now the final ballot or process will be confirmed in November, and from there, the work really commences. And just as a reference point, the electrical aggregation will be the process of negotiating, of securing the competitive proposals, and working with the primary electrical transmission service providers. Will probably be available by April, May of 2024. Natural gas is a little more dynamic and challenging, and natural gas consumption during the summer is minimal compared to the winter, so we probably won't have the options for our constituents available until October of 2024, November at the very latest, so they can enjoy any savings associated with those programs. But the real focal point and really clarity was established because the ability to opt in and opt out in very flexible terms was the reassurance that they needed, that this isn't a long-term commitment. If prices decline, they won't be penalized because they can very quickly exit the program and enjoy any savings, and then if it goes back the other way, they can opt back in. So it was a nice meeting this evening, and I want to thank the residents who came very prepared, and again, for Palmer Energy representative for their technical explanation of the process and the dynamics for the consumer at the residence level. So that was the recap of the meeting tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you for a nice recap of the Public Utilities Committee meeting. I've just been informed we're having a problem with the livestream, and neither Ms. Hamilton or myself can figure out what's going on, so we might take a moment, and anyone who might know how this operates.
Is this, Mr. Mayor, is this your ploy to get us to approve hiring the technical guy? Well done.
Well, here's your interview. Come fix it.
All right. We're still having technical difficulties, but we're trying to do a workaround. Thanks for coming back there, Ms. Hamilton. I've been lost without you.
I want to die.
Yes, I'm sure. So now we move on to unfinished business, and there's one item, is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2023-24. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. But Ms. Hamilton, would you be so kind as to read the title?
Ordinance Number 2023-24, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with 585 Partners LLC for community reinvestment area tax incentives.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first of all, do I understand that our workaround is jelling? Is that true?
Yeah, it reminds me of a Saturday Night Live skit, but I'm not going any further with that.
Garrett Morris, yeah.
So this is second reading on this. There's been quite a bit of discussion on this in the community over the last month, both among this group and other community partners. Just a short recap, 585 Partners LLC have applied for a 10-year, 50% CRA for a planned retail space along Akron Road. This is just north, this is on the property that we've rezoned by us earlier this year. It is just north of the dental building that's under construction. There's a vacant lot there. Mr. Starland did a nice job earlier talking about the details of what is proposed on this, what the proponents' business plan is for the property. Just to recap as much probably for the public as for the council members, but the process is that the application is made through Mr. Malley's office. They review the application and make a recommendation. It then moves on to Worcester Growth. If it's more than 50%, it goes to the Board of Education for a vote. If it's not over that 50% threshold, the Board of Education is notified. They have an opportunity to weigh in. That's what that notification is for. They're not required to weigh in, they did not on this one. At the Worcester, as Mr. Starland has indicated, Mr. Malley's office is recommended against, and I think he'll speak to that probably in a minute as to the basis for that. It went to Worcester Growth. There was a lively discussion there, and I think both the school district and the Wayne Economic Development Council abstained from that vote, and by a close vote, it was, Worcester Growth voted against it. It is now before council, and council's going to make the ultimate decision there. The votes leading up to here, basically, the, well, not the Board of Education vote, if it was in play, but the Worcester Growth is just a recommendation. And historically, going back, and again, I'm relative newcomer to this group, but I do have a bunch of history going back through my time with the school district, but there's been plenty of occasions when city council has not followed the recommendation of Worcester Growth or not followed the recommendation of the administration. So ultimately, the decision is tonight in our hands. As Mr. Starland pointed out in his opening remarks, this does result in an immediate increase in the property taxes, but there are taxes deferred on the property. That's the whole idea of abatement. It increases the tax basis, but it defers those taxes in part. Kind of, there's two catches, as I see to it. First of all, a lot of that deferred taxes is picked up by other taxpayers in the community. Now granted, given the number of other taxpayers, it's a very incremental increase. The second issue is, and I will separate this a little bit from, Mr. Starland probably accurately quoted me, but that was probably with regards to a specific abatement, but generally, if you weren't talking about the downtown area, the city stayed away from, the city, when I say the city, both the administration and council, stayed away from retail outside of the downtown area, with the exception in some, like the Hawkins Plaza area, where there was existing buildings that needed some reinvestment activity. So that's the background here on this. I know that at least one of our members is going to be gone next meeting, and because I think this is a very important issue for council, and I'd like, there could be more members missing next week, or next meeting around, I am going to move that we suspend the rules and take this to third and final reading tonight. So I'll make that motion.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ms. Knappich?
No.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Cavan?
No.
Change on second reading.
Yep. So at this point in time, I would say that it will have its second reading, and we can flesh out any council comments at the next meeting on November 6th. Now we turn our attention to... Now we turn our attention to new business, which is ordinance number 2023-25, presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title of this ordinance?
Ordinance number 2023-25. An ordinance amending Chapter 162 Management Benefits of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio by adding the position of Assistant Information Systems Manager.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Biden Dyke. And I may just turn this over to Mr. Montgomery right now because he's got the details on this and probably in a better position to explain what the administration is asking for here.
I'll start. I'll put out our managers and lag on here in our current IP. We have to, my best, and we're good. We've had several positions in our IT department that are covered under our quote-unbaried agreement. System Tech 1, System Tech 2, and then Tech 3. The 3 was, the 1 is just below the manager position. It's an hourly position. We've been trying to fill that particular position. So this is not a, this is not a request to increase headcount. This is, we've been trying to fill the system Tech 3 for over a year now. And we've been getting very few applicants attending. And so we reached out to some consultants and headhunters and a few of this kind of thing. They've indicated that for what we need, responsibilities and technical background, that we're not, we're not going to get it with that system Tech 3 position in the hourly ranks. We also talked to some companies in the industry that have these similar types of positions, and they gave us the same answer. A couple of applicants we were able to talk to told us the same thing. They would not come to the city. For that particular position, they wanted a manager position for that level to have succession planning. So we kept trying for over a year, and we're not seeing that. We don't have the ability outside of the negotiating and the quote-unbaried agreement changes today. This would allow for that position to be maintained based on any word hearing. I'm more of it to be able to fill the position and be an assistant. And inclusion also succession planning. It's not going to be around forever. And we'd really like to get somebody ramped up, you know, that we could be able to move in that position with knowledge and background. You know, move in there as well.
I'm speaking about what's this pay range if we add a Tech 3 that we're unable to support versus what we would be able to do if we're moved into the salary?
Biggest thing is allow us some flexibility because we don't have the flexibility in the system Tech 3. So that's, it's an hourly range, 3319 to 3590 dollars per hour. negotiated in the contract. We don't have anybody there right now. The pay range within our system for management would be about the same on the bottom. But we have an upper end a little more. So 3590 is about $74,000 a year in the upper range. But you were supposed to be right around 102, 103,000.
If I could ask, are there retirements anticipated? Is anybody given a notice of the intention to retire? Are we filling a position that we may not need for another five, 10 years?
So do we have a commitment for a specific year? No, but it's soon.
That doesn't tell me anything.
By my, I don't intend to.
Joel, my first start here, it's too podium.
When I first started with Lodsworth, I told Joel to start with that my intentions was to retire between the age of 55 and 60. And I've been here almost 10 years. A few years ago, Joel asked me if that was still my intention. I said I had every intention to retire sometime between the age of 55 and 60. Now, I am one of the oldest people that is in the 401K-type plan, no pension type thing. So I did tell him it's somewhat market-dependent because you never want to retire when the market's down, when everything's in the market type thing. So I am going to be 60 in April of '25. I also said my intentions were I wanted to spend more time with grandkids because I traveled a lot when I was younger in the federal service. And my daughter just had her grandchild. My son's about ready to have a child, too.
Congratulations.
Good.
I can't give a firm commitment.
No, no.
But though, it's all, and I've said it 10 years ago, my intention was between 55 and 60. I'll be 50, I'll be 60 in '25.
I understand and met. Thank you for bringing it forward. That wasn't necessary, but I really do appreciate that.
I understand your question.
Congratulations on your, on your grandkids, and I hope the market swings back up so you can retire quick, if that's what you would like to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for fixing the sound system.
In fact, don't, don't retire too quickly.
Yeah. Mr. Montgomery, I can certainly appreciate the situation that you're in and how hard you guys have worked to try to fill the position. One of my clients is a company down in Berlin, Centor. In the years I've worked with them, which has been about five years in their facilities work, they're on, they're looking now for their fourth IT person. So I've worked through three. The last one left keys on a Sunday afternoon with a note on the HR person's desk and just left. And their issue is just finding someone in the pay range, and it's a similar range. And they're, they're having difficulty filling that role. I think it's not a problem unique to the city. And I think this particular request tonight is probably in order, and probably needed in order to continue to support the administration. So thank you.
Well, IT support is the essence of any business today, and it's critical to have strategic succession planning with clear windows of departure, you know, ahead of us. And when Joel and I chatted and doing some competitive reviews, he's spot-on with the range for the level of assistant manager coming in, preparing, learning, grooming his staff. And it's something that, again, after a year and a half of trying to fill a Level 3 tech position with no success, it's a clear indicator that we have to take other measures and think creatively and outside of the box to secure the proper future skills that are needed in this rapidly evolving, you know, IT technology-based environment that we're functioning in. So thank you for initiating this request, the city administration.
I'd just like to say we've been lucky to have Mr. Eshelman.
Absolutely.
Someone of his caliber for as long as we have because IT folks tend to stay a while and then move on. And, you know, he stayed longer than I, I was worried he was going to be here just about five years and move on, so.
Unless they're very happy, Mr. President. So he must be very happy and content in his role.
You know, I won't speak for him, but I'm just grateful that he stayed so long.
Yes.
He's always answered questions when I've had him, and I appreciate that we have him. So seeing nothing else, we'll consider ordinance number 2023-25 as having its first reading. That brings us to resolution number 2023-59. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It's a budgeted item, so we will not need to suspend the rules. But we will need our Clerk of Council, Ms. Hamilton, to read the title.
Resolution number 2023-59. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the construction of a booster pump station serving the Long Road area and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, I turn the floor over to you, sir.
You know, maintaining the infrastructure of our water treatment and our water processing facility is critical and essential for the operation of the city. And I want to commend Mr. Fritz for the detailed summary. I feel like a quasi-wastewater expert now, based on the tutorials that he's provided to me in the Cliff Notes.
Ready to make a career move?
But this one is very straightforward, and the pieces that we're going to be reviewing tonight are all within our budget and have been anticipated, and this is now just the execution of it. But this particular piece of legislation pertains to the replacement of the Long Road booster station due to the age, condition, and inadequate capacity. Even if we would go refurbish the existing unit back to, you know, OEM specs, it would be significantly under capacity, and we know, recognize the growth in that corridor. The new booster station will be much larger and include adequate space for three 750-gallon-per-minute booster pumps. So it's going to be supercharged. The new station will be equipped with a backup power generator, auto-transfer switch, and will also include a complete control and monitoring system, state-of-the-art. The benefits I've just highlighted, if we refurbish it, it'll still be under capacity. We need the higher output and capacity with the new technology. It was a budgeted item. If you want to get into more technical details, we can certainly have that discussion. But Mr. Fritz did a very nice job summarizing. In the budget, it's budgeted at $800,000, and they're forecasting right now approximately $750,000. But this will allow them to go out and begin that bidding process, which will be a competitive bid. But due to the timeliness associated with it, I would like your consideration this evening to move this to third and final reading so they can expedite and commence the bidding process.
It's budgeted, Mr. Ansel.
Oh, motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Any further discussion? My history with, between this city and then working with other communities, 10 years is about as best you can get out of those pumping stations and.
I think that would finish at the 70s.
Yeah.
We've got our mileage.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's been the history of the employees here at the City of Worcester, whether it's in the waste treatment or PPM, police department. We, they take good care of our equipment. If there's nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-59 passes. Brings us to resolution number 2023-60. Again, it'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. And again, it's a budgeted item, so will not require suspension of the rules. Ms. Hamilton, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-60. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for lime and bio solids residual management.
Mr. Ansel, I'll yield the floor to you again.
Well, first, this is a split budgetary item with $450,000 going toward the water budget for lime sludge and $450,000 in the sewer budget for the bio solids distribution, processing. So these are budgeted items, as was highlighted. And this is critical because the contracts that we currently have in place were three-year contracts that conclude at the end of this year. So that being noted, it's an essential part of the processing of our city water and wastewater treatment facilities. It's an ongoing annual expense, and time is of the essence. We don't want to miss the gap there. And we're, you know, being provided reassurance that if we agree and approve this immediately, they can start the bidding process and get this renewed before 2024. Correct, Mr. Fritz?
Correct.
Good. So that being noted, I would motion to adopt a resolution 2023-60, Mr. President.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any questions, discussion, comments? Seeing none, Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-60 passes. Final piece of legislation is resolution number 2023-61. Again, it'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, and I believe this is also budgeted, so will not require suspension of the rules. And for the last time, would you read the title to this legislation?
Resolution number 2023-61. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to expend additional funds for control and communication improvements and services from Seifert Technologies for water and wastewater treatment facilities and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours again.
Yes, in this particular piece, I commend Mr. Fritz for his consolidation efforts to drive down the total cost of the consultative services associated with the water monitoring and the communication improvements, control and communication improvements. Seifert Technology will displace Protech and SCI. And because of that consolidation in the projects referenced, and I'll give a brief summary here, the originally approved $50,000 will now probably be closer to $100,000. So that's the requirement to have this on council review this evening. But, and again, I don't want to go through because we all have it in front of us, but there's eight projects in water production that has a lot of technical terms with flow meters, controllers, CO2 feeds, et cetera. That's about $27,000. Water production projects, total two, at $16,000. Storage tank control and communication improvements, troubleshooting miscellaneous communication issues, et cetera. Water recovery projects, 11 projects totaling approximately $25, $281. Again, all of this is programming, review of station controls, pumping controls, all of the, you know, high state-of-the-art control systems that runs the functionality of our water processing, water recovery systems. And then finally, four additional projects at water recovery for about $33,000. He's really got these itemized nicely, all related to the control enhancement review and monitoring assessment. So now we have one consolidated expert to come in and troubleshoot, and you don't get Protech and SCI pointing the fingers at one another. This is a much, much cleaner and efficient protocol going forward. And again, a great job in identifying this opportunity and coming in and making this proposal. So with that being noted, if you don't have any questions for Mr. Fritz, I would motion to adopt, Mr. President.
All right. Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Now, if you have questions for Mr. Fritz, fire away.
Actually, I don't have a question for Mr. Fritz. I'd like to say thank you very much for the excellent job that you're doing. And I think this is a great idea that we have one contractor as opposed to two. Then my question that I have is for the administration, and this happened earlier this year. Is there a reason why we have an open-ended request just to give authority to exceed $50,000 as opposed to, you know, with a maximum of $100,000?
So it's not actually open-ended. I'd ask Mike to put in there exactly what we're asking for, 250 and 100. If you put in those other projects that would give us 200, so that you could see exactly where we're spending.
I, I see exactly where we're going to spend it. I see that. But our worksheets don't go with the legislation necessarily into the books. And I'm going to ask again that when we have legislation asking council to give the administration authority to exceed bids, we at least have a cap on it. And that was my.
It's in the request, but it's not in the actual legislation.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So if we go over, you have to come back.
Counselor.
Been there before.
Mm-hmm. We could, you could move to amend.
I would move to amend, and I would, I would move to amend this legislation to put a cap of $100,000.
I would second that.
Motion to amend by Ms. Knappich to put a cap in the legislation of $100,000, seconded by Mr. Ansel. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Ansel.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Okay, there is a, the motion to amend did pass and the resolution will be amended to include that it would be capped at $100,000 in terms of the amount that would be spent. Now, proceeding, do we need a new motion to adopt with? Yes. So that would come from Mr. Ansel.
Motion to adopt the amended version of resolution 2023-61, Mr. President.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Any further discussion?
I have a question. It might be a really dumb question, but if this is, if this is a request to exceed the $50,000 limit, and I believe Mr. Biden-Dyke stated that it is budgeted, how, so we already budgeted for it to be $100,000 and we're exceeding?
We budgeted for this type of stuff.
Okay.
To multiple vendors as needed.
Okay. So it's just like an open-ended?
And we initially anticipated we probably would only get to 50, but as the other entities that we were using were unable to meet our needs or respond, it ends up being most, most of this being done by one vendor that has been responding, heads were going to exceed 50 with that one.
Mr. Montgomery, if it had been done by five different vendors at $20,000, we wouldn't be having this conversation. It's partly the consolidation of services as opposed to the total amount.
And in this case, there's just very few vendors that do this.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you. That helps clarify.
Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
And Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Ansel.
Yes.
Resolution number 2023-61 passes. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion. And Ms. Linda Smith has signed up to speak and if he would come. And hopefully the microphones turned on. If not, press the push button and make sure the green light's on.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Linda Smith. I live at 3108 Bayberry Cove. And I'm delighted to be here tonight to announce that over the summer, the Worcester Homelessness Task Force has facilitated the establishment of a new LLC known as Homeward Bound. In addition, at the close of the 2022-23 winter season, the task force negotiated a plan with the Wayne County Housing Coalition to assume responsibility for the operation of the severe weather shelter during the coming, coming winter season. Shelter will continue to be located at the Salvation Army Building, but Homeward Bound will staff and manage the program and services with the help of community volunteers. Today, flyers were delivered to 15 local churches and community sites to kick off our annual recruitment and training program, which will be held on November 6th. In addition, we will soon be initiating a local fundraising drive to support the shelter throughout the winter. And beginning on December 1st, we're expecting that the Homeward Bound Shelter will be open every night when the temperature drops to 32 degrees or less. And consequently, this small increase in temperature rates will most likely increase the number of nights the shelter will be available in Worcester. Part-time shelter manager has been hired to be at the shelter during the early evening hours, along with an additional overnight staff who will also help with security and the intake procedures. We appreciate the past interest and support of the, that we've received from the community over the last few years and are hopeful that with the support of this body, we can identify and enhance funding sources for this important human service. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Very much.
And finally, the council portion of miscellaneous, we'll start out with Mr. Ansel.
Yes. Ms. Smith, thank you for that update. Your diligence and passion over the years has really netted out to something very, very promising for those in need during the cold winter months. And Homeward Bound is certainly an appropriate designate for that service. So thank you for all that you've done to carry out this important mission. And then I, and then I'd like to highlight the city administration, particularly Mr. Doherty's exceptional third quarter year-to-date financial performance summary. I won't go into all the specifics, but again, revenues are exceeding plan and expenditures are well below plan. So we have positive drop-through on the financial macro overview within the city of Worcester. So it's always very reassuring to have that type of performance, quarterly performance updates and seeing the city's financial position prospering so well within our community. Taxes, taxes are up on revenue, income tax, sales, property taxes, everything is going very, very well and expenditures are well within budget. So kudos to the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel. Ms. Warden.
Thank you. If I could just say for the folks who were at home or weren't able to make it in this evening for the committee meeting that we had, the city does have on their website some FAQ, some frequently asked questions about the aggregate program that might be very helpful. Earlier this evening, I reviewed what the actual ballot language looks like, and it's very vague. It's very brief and not super informed. So if you don't know about it, I highly encourage you to, to go on to the city's website. I believe you can find a link to it on the homepage and educate yourself about what this program is. It seems like it's going to hopefully save the customers quite a substantial amount in their energy costs. So please look that up if you, if you have any questions about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. Mr. Reynolds.
Just a thank you to Mr. Ansel and for running that committee meeting beforehand. It was very informative. And I appreciate the public that did attend. I think we had better questions from the public, no offense, fellow council members, than we would have, than we did when they made the presentation to council, because I think they had done a lot of homework. And I know some of those people were very informed as they came in the door. But I learned more listening to them, probably ask those questions than I did in the initial presentation. So again, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Cavan.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Ms. Knappick.
I would just like to thank Ms. Warden for mentioning that people should go to the website. This was a very, very excellent committee meeting today. And, and as Ms. Warden said, this could save individuals, homeowners, property owners, a lot of money. And since the ballot language is vague, become as informed as, as you possibly can.
Thank you, Ms. Knappick. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Thank you for all the comments that were made and Ms. Smith, for your update. Those are always appreciated. I also just wanted to mention that I've seen regularly in the audience a former council member who served for four years on this council, Bill Bastancic. Obviously, after four years, he has a pretty good idea what's going on on city council, yet he's been attending regularly the meetings here. And we appreciate your attendance, Bill, and appreciate you coming. So I'm not stating that other people have not attended. That's not my point. I just, I know Bill well, and I've noticed that he's been here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. And Mr. Sanders, we'll give you the last word.
With all the information that's already been shared, I have nothing to add.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Mr. Ansel, move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.